Hey Julian, can we get started or I can't tell if the sound is on or off?
The sound is on, I'm just turning it up, but we should be good to get started.
Okay. Let's go ahead and get started. I'm gonna call this December 15th, put some managed planning commission meeting to order. Let's start out with roll call. Carrie Bosworth.
Present.
I'm Mark Bachman, I'm obviously here. Mike Resco.
Here.
TC Labby has not gonna be available this evening, so he's got an excused absence. Josh Amato.
Here.
Jerry Norman.
Here.
And then, I don't see John, am I correct? And then John's not here?
Not yet.
Okay, so no John Bachman. Mike, did I call you? Mike Resco?
He did.
Okay. Great, thanks. Next, let's do the agenda. Any comments about the agenda for this evening? I don't see any or hear any, so we'll call the agenda approved. I do just wanna make the comment that for the commissioners that I'm a little under the weather, so that's why I'm trying to do this virtually this evening. So didn't let you know that ahead of time, but we'll muddle through it. Okay, next, let's do the meeting accessibility statement. Julian, can you read that?
The public is welcome to attend planning commission meetings in person at City Hall, 801 228th Avenue Southeast, or virtually through Zoom. In accordance with latest public health guidance, masks are recommended but not required for in-person attendance. Public comments: Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes for non-agenda comment, five minutes of representing an organization, and seven minutes for agenda public comment. For those providing comments through Zoom, once you have dialed into the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to indicate you would like to provide public comment. Your mic will remain muted until you are called on during the public comment period. To give public comment via Zoom, join the webinar via the link https://us06web.zoom.us/j/82822648794. To give public comment via mobile or landline telephone, dial the following number: us+12532158782, webinar ID 82822648794.
Okay, thanks Julian. I think John Bachman arrived, if you would note that. Next approval of the minutes from last week's meeting, that was the December 8th meeting. Any comments or corrections about the meeting minutes from that meeting? You know, hear or see anybody that has any corrections they'd like to make, so we'll call those meeting minutes approved. Next, we have non-agenda public comment. So just a reminder, our agenda topic for this evening is reviewing the Department of Commerce and Puget Sound Regional Council update checklists. So this is public comment for other things other than that. Julian, do we have anybody for public comment?
Yes, we have one here in person, Ms. Victor.
Good evening. My name's Mary Victor. I've lived in Sammamish 22 years. And first of all, I wanted to thank you. The planning commission last week was really excellent, probably the best one I've attended in many years. So thank you for all the discussions, comments, guidance, thoughtful things on visioning. And I know Paul Stickney, who's a regular, he had very similar feeling for it. So I really wanted to thank you for all the work that you did for that and the inputs that you have and any follow-ups that you did. So I'm actually talking a little bit on visioning tonight. I passed out these to each planning commissioner, and if you're not here, we'll get them to you maybe at the next one in January. It's called "How to End Global Warming," and it's just a little, that's actually a note card, and then there's a bookmark, and then this card called "How to Build Community." And one of the reasons I wanted to do it is, these are simple things that anyone can do anywhere, because character of a neighborhood isn't just where we live or what it looked like. So the streets to it, it's what the people do within that. So I just, this is not mine, I'm just reading it. And the copies that I gave you, you can either keep them or share them. I would ask that you not throw them away or recycle them. Go ahead and pass them along, because I think the messages are good enough. So I'm gonna read it. It's called "How to Build Community." Turn off your TV. Leave your house. Know your neighbors. Greet people. Look up when you are walking. Sit on your stoop. Plant flowers. Use your library. Play together. Buy from local merchants. Share what you have. Help a lost dog. Take children to the park. Honor elders. Support neighborhood schools. Fix it, even if you didn't break it. Have potlucks. Garden together. Pick up litter. Read stories aloud. Dance in the street. Talk to the mail carrier. Listen to the birds. Put up a swing. Help carry something heavy. Barter for your goods. Start a tradition. Ask a question. Hire young people for odd jobs. Organize a block party. Bake extra and share. Ask for help when you need it. Open your shades. Sing together. Share your skills. Take back the night. Turn up the music. Turn down the music. Listen before you react to anger. Mediate a conflict. Seek to understand. Learn from new and uncomfortable angles. Know that no one is silent, though many are not heard, and work to change this. So anyway, I was just really inspired by it. I'd actually done this for the planning commission and emailed a couple of the other commissions, and also for the city council in 2019, and I thought it was time to bring it back. So I did purchase these from, they're from Syracuse workers in New York, and the text was actually by their members of the community, and then Karen Kearney did the watercolor and the colored pencils on the posters. And then I did purchase these posters, and if anybody has an idea for how they could be used or where they might be donating them, however that might be. So we have the "How to Build Community," which I just read. There's also one I'd done before called "How to Build Global Community." And then there's one, a new one, they have one on the pandemic, but this is "How to End Global Warming." So anyway, I hope that you enjoy those, and sorry I ran just a little bit over, but it was just such a great message I wanted to share with everybody. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Ms. Victor. And we have one hand raised, Mr. Stickney. I'm gonna promote you to panelist.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Paul Stickney, Sammamish. I'd like to talk about an auspicious opportunity. I talked about this with the city council on Tuesday. At my last week's meeting, non-agenda, I talked a little bit about the pace of housing growth in Sammamish, where from 1980 to 1999, about 650 homes were built a year. That's close to 13,000 houses. From 2001, oh, I'm sorry, from 2000 to 2005, there were about 500 homes built in Sammamish, but they were all enabled by King County before incorporation. That was roughly 500 homes a year. For 17 years, from 2006 to 2022, we've had about 205 homes average built in Sammamish, or around 3,500. I would call the first two time periods fairly rapid growth, but I think the last 17 years have been well-managed growth. The issue is that our community is misdeveloped, because 85% of our housing stock was done by King County. So the auspicious opportunity is to bring the private-built environment into optimal balance with the natural-built environment and the public-built environment in Sammamish, which are both outstanding. There's a nexus of opportunities coming together now. There's a correct set of circumstances happening. And to use a couple of Latin phrases, now's the opportunity for both carpe diem and ad meliora. Carpe diem, we all know, is seize the day. Ad cumiora, I looked up and I liked it. It means in Latin, towards, towards better things. So the way to do this is to really look at, what were the private-built environment aims for the first 17 years in the two comp plans, the first two comp plans? What were the private-built environment aims over the last five years? And what are the private-built environment aims of optimizing? I think we need to correct any off-base information, narrative, or numbers, and all agree on the facts, and then carefully compare the consequences of what happens if we stay with a private-built environment approach that was what the first two comp plans wanted, what those, yeah, on council the last four or five years or after, or what optimizing would do. To fairly compare those, that's the way forward, and get that done before we really move forward in earnest on the comp plan. Certain parts of the comp plan can move forward, but we should really decide which way we're gonna go first on the private-built environment due to consistency throughout the plan. Have a good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney, and we have no more hands raised.
All right. Thank you, Julian. So next, we'll move on to our new business main agenda topic for this evening, which is reviewing some themes and the checklist from the Department of Commerce and the Puget Sound Regional Council that we'll use as part of our comp plan update exercise. And I see David sitting at the table there. David, are you, are you leading this?
Chair Bachman, yes, David Pyle, Community Development. Bear with me for a minute while I share my screen. Great, hopefully everyone can hear me. David Pyle, Department of Community Development. I'm here tonight to provide a presentation and overview of the city's findings, the city's consultants' findings in review of the 2015 comprehensive plan, and contrasted to the Department of Commerce and Puget Sound Regional Council Comprehensive Plan Update Checklists. With the Comprehensive Plan Update Project now underway, we are working on refining the project's scope. This requires that we assess what has changed since the last comprehensive plan, including changes to state planning requirements, regional planning requirements, and King County policies. Keep in mind that just because we are doing an update to our comprehensive plan, that we don't need to throw out the 2015 version and replace it with a completely new one. The Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update is intended to be a review of where we stand compared to where we were in 2015, and to identify what we might need to change to make sure we are properly planning for the future based on what we know today. In fact, most of our policy language is still valid and applicable, although we will likely need to make updates to specific themes or topics. Housing is a good example of a topic we know we will have to visit, and where we will certainly need to make policy adjustments. To help identify where we will need to focus, there are resources available to help us review our current 2015 comprehensive plan and contrast it against what has changed. Tonight, we will be discussing two of these tools: the Washington State Department of Commerce Comprehensive Plan Update Checklist, and the Puget Sound Regional Council Comprehensive Plan Checklist. Keep in mind that these tools are provided by agencies that have review authority over the city's comprehensive plan update process, and we do need to demonstrate to these agencies how our updated comprehensive plan addresses these topics and changes listed in the checklists. That is, Commerce and PSRC will be reviewing our comprehensive plan using these checklists to confirm our updated plan is adequate. Also, keep in mind that the checklists we are discussing tonight represent the minimum that needs to be done to successfully complete the periodic update. These checklists show what we must do with this update. They don't necessarily show what is aspirational and what other objectives the city might have with the update. In this sense, we are setting one of the bookends in the scoping process, or establishing what the floor is. Beyond this meeting, we will be working on refining the other bookend of the process and scope by defining what aspirational topics the city would like to take on. By establishing the floor and the ceiling, we will have set the scope. We are hopeful to have a complete comprehensive plan update project scope set by mid-March and adopted through the city council by resolution. Having a clear scope will allow us to transition from discussion on what we should do, and shift our focus to review of the comprehensive plan elements and what adjustments are needed. That is not to say things not included in the scope cannot be added later. However, to avoid scope creep, if it is topically not represented in the adopted scope, we will likely advocate that it be addressed at a future date through the annual docket update process in 2025 and beyond. Foundational to the checklist are changes in state law, and as you know, there have been some big ones. The most remarkable one being House Bill 1220. All of these changes to state law are reflected in the checklist and must be addressed. Some are easier to address than others. Now, we'll move into the findings made by our consultant team when reviewing the 2015 comprehensive plan against the checklist. Our objective tonight is not to thoroughly debate these findings with you, nor is it to fix topics identified. Rather, we wanted you to see how the checklists are used to help us set the scope of work, and how they are used to set the minimum standard for what needs to be included in the update. We've summarized the findings in the next few slides. We'll read through them, and please feel free to stop me if you have any questions. Keep in mind that we don't have our consultant with us tonight, so we may have to take any questions we can't answer in the moment back to the consultant for response. Also, please note that all of the findings are listed here, that not, that not all of the findings are listed here. This is a summary. Finally, some of the points made in these slides might seem a bit esoteric, and there can be a lot of jargon and acronyms. If you don't know what something is, please feel free to ask. Some of us have been doing this for 20 years, and we can forget that some of this might not make much sense. With that, I'll start with the first slide. I am going to just read through these. They're, they're pretty dry, so we'll get through it as, you know, as quickly as we can, but please feel free to stop me and ask any questions. The first slide is related to disconnection between policy and action. I need to move this just a second. Many policies, the finding was that many policies are void of implementation specifics by commerce standards. This finding suggested an additional layer of action or objectives may be necessary. I think what they're saying is, they want to see how we're gonna actually implement policy language. So we need to start to, to nudge into implementation and, and provide direction on how to implement it. That's something that we are definitely aware of. We also are wanting to start to measure things so that we can understand how successful we've been against achieving our objectives set by the comprehensive plan. The housing policies related to different housing types are not expressed in maps. This is a big topic. This goes back to the land use map and the zoning map and how they relate to each other. You're gonna hear a lot about this with the comprehensive plan update cycle. Sure.
Just a, just a clarification, because after reading these, some of them are a little unclear if this is a requirement. Now, I heard you say requirement, so it feels like if this were stated, express housing types in maps, or that's a change that's needed, that would be clearer. So am I interpreting that the way this is stated, it actually means we need to express this in maps?
Yep. Yeah, so this is, this is a review of the 2015 plan, and what they're finding is, is, well, we're not doing that in the 2015 plan. The checklist says we have to do it, so we're, we're, yeah, exactly. You can translate it as you did.
Yeah. And really, this, I wouldn't necessarily say reverting these, but it was unclear for some of these, and exactly what changes were required. So if I have other questions along those lines without the interpretation that they're all required, because some of them said like, should, or better, like, so.
We also struggle with that same language in the checklist. Should, it'd be better if you did this this way. You know, it's not always clear.
Sa- safer to assume required.
And there are certain components of the checklist that are flushed out more clearly than other components. I think that relates to the fact that we have components of comprehensive plans that have been around for a long time in our, in our fundamental two comprehensive plans, but there have been some big shifts recently in state law, and I think the state and PSRC are even trying to figure out what it means, and they have their staff working on guidance right now. So we haven't seen that guidance yet, and it is possible that they could update the checklist as a result of guidance received. So it's, you know, it's a, it's a
Fluid.
Fluid, emerging topic.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I have a follow-up question on the maps. Are they like, are they legally binding, or are they just to give a visual identity, identification of where we're actually thinking when we write it down?
It's both. So I think it's part of community planning, you wanna show where certain housing types would go in the city. That usually is expressed through a comprehensive plan futures land use map that defines the different land use designation areas: single-family low, single-family medium, single-family high, those kind of things, multifamily low, multifamily medium, multifamily high, mixed-use, commercial business, those types of larger land use designations. And what we would do is define those in the comprehensive plan. And we would say in the comprehensive plan, what types of zones that might include, and what types of uses or housing types might be included. Then, what that would do is enable us to have a more dynamic relationship between the futures land use map and the zoning. The issue that we currently face is that our, our, our land use map is, is static to our zoning map. There is no future vision for how the city might develop over time or change over time. And anytime we want to make a change, it is a very cumbersome, laborious process to get to that change. The example is the most recent San Tony property rezone, where we had to first go in and change the land use designation in town center, followed by a change to the zoning. Many cities have a system where they have a futures land use map that identifies a range of zones that might be allowed, in that identifies criteria for each of those zones, the things that would need to be required for you to have that zone assigned. Then, they have in the zoning map and in the development regulations, a definition for each of those zones that includes the different uses that are allowed, could be in a table, different ways to do that. And then finally, there's a set of criteria for rezoning that identifies, you know, it has to be, you know, not encumbered by critical areas or sensitive area restrictions, it has to have adequate infrastructure service, it has to have certain proximity to other, other amenities. And then, so long as you meet the definition in the, the comprehensive plan, and so long as you meet the definition in the development regulations, that, and so long as you meet the criteria for a rezone, then you can go through the rezone process, and it's not a legislative action, it's a quasi-judicial action that is taken to the hearing examiner. So what that does is it allows us to be more specific on a block by block about what we want, without having to take it up as a massive legislative process each time we get there. So there are many cities that do that that way. There's other ways to do it, too. We're gonna have a lot more, there's actually a slide in the deck further down about that. So, and we will be coming back to you with a land use conversation regarding housing, land use, and zoning, because those all work hand in hand.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
One more question. How much of this is gonna bleed over into legislative action? Do we need to have the development code and other code changes made along with the update to get through the checklist?
So we will be making code changes. The code changes we will make will be the ones that are necessary for consistency between the development regulations and the policy direction. We will have policy direction that will direct us to take things on down the road when the time is right, but we will not be making changes in, in the moment for that. For example, one of the things we could do is we could set the land, the futures land use map and make, and make changes to that that would enable us to make zoning changes later, but we don't have to take on making any zoning changes at this point in time. There, there's other things that we, that are similar to that, too, where we'll set policy around climate action that would direct us to start to take on certain types of studies or monitoring or things like that, but that we won't necessarily fix with just this update. It will, it will give us direction on how to handle these topics in the future going forward for the next 20 years, really 10 years, because we're in a 10-year update cycle, but the, the, the planning horizon and the vision is for 20 years to 2044. So essential public facilities and schools are not sufficiently addressed in the existing plan, and according to staff, will require cross-departmental discussions about siting, expansion, et cetera. We want to make sure that we're being responsive to some of the state direction and the county direction with regard to siting of schools. It's, it's an important topic. We want to make sure that we have great schools in the city and have adequate land and capacity for the schools to continue to grow as needed, but also at the same time have the right amount of infrastructure to support our schools. So it's, it's, it's a complex topic, which is why we're saying we need cross-departmental discussions. The existing plan does not include a contingency chapter to guide any circumstances of underplanned or under-financed infrastructure. So this is a challenge as well. We, you know, we can make assumptions about growth, but what happens if the assumptions about funding or the, even the assumptions about rate of growth don't hold true? We want to make sure that we understand or have direction to, to the current staff and future staff, future planning commissioners, future city council members, about how to handle things in a changing environment. What do we do if, if the funding that we thought we were gonna have for road improvements don't come through? What, how do we handle working with the, the Water District if King County decides to remove the North Diversion Project from its capital projects list again? Those are really big topics that are important to provide direction in a comprehensive plan that's future thinking to make sure we're giving direction on how to handle that. The future land use map, this is the one that I raised already. This is just a good example, because we, we really feel where this is a lot of, there's a lot of opportunity here for us to think about the future, and to allow, over the years, changes to be made that are responsive to needs in the community that might emerge. I think the biggest point here is that most of the city is low-density residential. There is no proposal to change that. What we're looking at more is, is likely to be how we address the existing commercial footprint, the existing impervious, the existing traffic patterns, and, and where there's opportunity to add some infill in those areas. You know, ideally, we would not be laying down new impervious. We would take advantage of existing impervious and repurpose it. But that requires that we find incentives to do so, and make sure that when it's being rebuilt, that it's being done in a way that's appropriate to the community. Much more conversation on this to come. Missing or insufficient housing element content. The goals and policies of the existing housing element are insufficient considering new state legislation. HB 1220, big change there. There's no mention of emergency transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, and low-income housing. There's been some other bills, I think HB 1590 was one that was passed recently, that requires, or that provides additional revenue resources for, for the construction of, or implementation of emergency and transitional housing. The checklist and guidance of HB 1220 signal the importance of including detailed analysis in the housing element related to racially disparate impacts during the update. We're gonna need some support to, to review that and make sure that we're in compliance with state law and with King County, with Puget Sound Regional Council and King County direction on this, as, as all three of those bodies, this RCW 3670A, Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050, and King County countywide planning policies all address racially disparate impacts to housing, associated with housing. Regionally, regional responsibility and collaboration. The finding was, is that there's not a lot of mention of regional collaboration in our comprehensive plan, our current comprehensive plan. So we're gonna want to take that on. We're gonna want to think about how we fit in, in the region, and how we work with our neighbors, whether it be Redmond, Issaquah-Bellview, or King County. our neighbors, whether it be Redmond, Issaquah, Bellevue, or King County. We want to look at our capital facilities, utilities and transportation goals and think about how they fit into the region. And just look at collaboration across the board as there's a lot of opportunity for us going forward to make sure we are in, in sync with what other cities in the county are doing. Internal plan consistency and coordination. There's inconsistent terminology used in the plan. We want to make sure to, to do a comprehensive review of that and, and get the terminology right, make sure we're, we're using one voice. We need to do better to align land use and capital facilities elements and planning for infrastructure. We need to do a better job with, with transportation specifically and non-motorized connections. I know that's a big one that I've heard from the council is, is really wanting to find a way to provide connections between neighborhoods where there currently are not. The example that we used the other night was where you have lots of adjoining cul-de-sacs, but no way to get between neighborhoods with a non-motorized travel. So is there a way for us to do some sort of resistance mapping or direct as a matter of policy that we take on resistance mapping and identify where there are areas of connection that could be made and then provide policy direction to start a program to acquire easements between, between cul-de-sacs so that we can put in a five-foot wide trail with a fence on both sides of it, just to join those together? You know, difficult thing to achieve, but the, the livability and the mobility in the community would be significantly improved if we could start to add some of those connections. We're currently, you know, you're, you're a quarter mile away from something. You have to walk three miles to get there because you have to go all the way around to get to that point. So looking for that, that's important. Let's see, the Puget Sound Regional, now moving into the Puget Sound Regional Council checklist. Just a second. The Puget Sound Regional Council checklist is a little bit different than the, the Department of Commerce checklist. It's really looking at consistency with Vision 2050 and how the city's comprehensive plan aligns with it. So that's what the focus of these next few slides will be. Again, reduce disparities, mitigate negative development impacts, special attention to vulnerable groups and historically marginalized populations. We need to add emphasis on reducing disparities. We don't have any existing housing goals and policies for anti-displacement, promoting homeownership, et cetera. Our, our housing, transportation parks and capital facilities goals are silent when it comes to advancing racial and social equity. We have weak transportation policy for encouraging and maintaining transportation facilities for people with mobility disabilities. This next one, environmental justice and climate change. I had to ask our staff to help explain the first bullet here. Here's a few examples of potential impacts on vulnerable populations in areas related to climate change. Those experiencing homelessness or housing instability are exposed to severe heat, cold wind, et cetera, when living outside or in vehicles. That those with limited incomes are not able to afford increased utility bills during winter or summer months, putting them at increased risk. This is also the case with any home maintenance and repairs needed after storms, which are not always covered by insurance. People also utilizing heating equipment intended for outdoor use indoors because they aren't aware of the danger and/or don't have other options. Carbon monoxide poisoning and the increase of fire danger. People living in areas with more concrete and fewer trees creates more heat and less shade in the summer. We've all heard about that recently with some of the heat we've faced. Impacts on food supply and likely increase in food costs, extreme temperatures, ability to work outside, et cetera. So we're, we're looking at needing to add some support programs or, or policy that directs towards support programs so that all residents, regardless of race, social or economic status, have access to clean air, water, other elements of a healthy environment. Also direct that capital facilities, utilities and transportation policies need to add consideration of climate change. That's going to be a big one as we're adding a climate, climate and resiliency chapter to the comprehensive plan this year per direction from council. Coordination and planning for disaster mitigation and emergency management is limited to transportation. We need to think a little more broadly about that. The next is the transportation element, that it prioritizes vehicle travel. The transportation element's principally concerned with maintaining level of service for vehicles. And secondary, it's, other mobility choices are secondary. The, the elements, the, the transportation element goals and policies do not focus on mobility choice and don't look beyond that to prepare for substantive change in technology or mobility patterns. An example of this is the King County Regional Trail being built down off of Lake Simamish Parkway. When they were forecasting the need for, or the trips on that trail, one of the things that they ended up doing was, was changing their forecast related to the use of electric bikes, because that, that trail was forecasted to be an alternative commute option for people living in Issaquah to get to light rail in the, in the near future. So they were, they had to adjust their models to account for a, a change in technology that, that people might be more likely to commute on that trail using an electric bike than they historically would have been if they were not using an electric bike. There's no concurrency program or LOS standards for non-motorized modes of transportation, no analysis of funding capability by transportation mode. So these are things that we need to consider. There, there will be a point where we need to assess how far we take these so that we are compliant with, with what the checklist requires and we are in alignment with PRC's vision, PSRC's Vision 2050. And I think that's going to be an important conversation because many of these are, are big topics and, and can cost us quite a bit of money in the future going forward if we obligate ourselves to doing something. So we're going to want to make sure we're, we're having community conversations about what this means.
I do have a question on that. How does PS, and I suppose I should read this again. I, anyway, how do they account for the different, because this incorporates everywhere from Tacoma to Simamish. So how do they incorporate the differences between Simamish and Tacoma, which is a perfect grid system and great for walking, riding a bike and things like that, whereas us maybe not so much, you know, eight months out of the year? How does, how do we account for that and still meet their vision of, of what we put in our comp plan?
So we get our geographic group assignment by way of PSRC's Vision 2050. That is where the city is put into the cities and towns category. There are certain attributes or aspects about being in the qualities about being in the cities and towns category that are considered and carried into review of policies. So when you're looking at how we align with PSRC Vision 2050 policies, you need to think, first think about, well, what is Simamish? Is it, is it a core city? Is it a high-capacity transit city? Is it a cities and towns city? Well, we're a cities and towns city. And you need to think about how that helps frame your review of alignment with PSRC Vision 2050's policies. So we'll be looking at that with that lens. It's not clear. There isn't a, a scientific formula for how to do that, but we, we always want to remember that the city is in the cities and towns category. So when we're looking at alignment with things like LOS standards for non-motorized modes of transportation as compared to a city that might have more density and is more walkable widely across the entire city, we want to consider that. The, the city does have some areas that are walkable, and maybe we want to set a policy that is aspirational to expand that walkability. But I don't think that, that creating walkability for, you know, a neighborhood that's six miles from any sort of retail activity so that you could walk there and have sidewalks all the way is something that's necessarily attainable. It's a great idea. I think people would, would really like that, but the cost, the sheer cost of construction of sidewalks is, is astronomical. So what are our alternatives? Do we have, you know, ways to, to provide alternative pathways? How do we get people onto primary paths with relatively efficient or short distances? Those kind of things. So we've made it through our summary of the findings and want to offer the opportunity to respond to any closing questions. We've added two questions as a starting place. Again, mostly we just want to make sure that you, you all understand how we are working through the scoping process and setting the floor, the minimum that we have to do. It's not always clear, it's not always clean. It's, it's not scientific necessarily, so we're doing our best to try to understand where our areas of focus need to be for us to meet what we would consider to be the minimum requirement. Also remember that, that there are not other checklists included yet. We might see a checklist of this sort from King County regarding King County countywide planning policies. We also have another checklist that we'll be looking at regarding critical areas updates, which are also part of this update process. We'll be bringing that back to you probably sometime next summer, because that's a later part of this two-year process. So, but this right here is, is the core. These are the agencies that actually will be reviewing our, our comprehensive plan sometime in the, in the end of the summer of 24, as we're ramping up and trying to get to a point where we're adopting a new comprehensive plan.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to ask Vice Chair Amato, Josh, can you kind of help with questions and comments with folks there in, at the dais?
Yes, I can.
So taking transportation, for example, in multimodal, you know, we can build bike lanes and sidewalks, but we can't add buses. So we have to work with our regional partners to provide mass transit. Same for a lot of our infrastructure for utility districts, for example. You know, we need the north bypass. How do those, yeah, I mean, we identify them in our plan, but we're reliant on third parties or partners to get them done.
So setting policy in the plan that directs us to collaborate continuously, monitor, support, those types of actions by other agencies, that's another example of something we, we won't necessarily achieve with this update. We're not going to be able to have transit appear with this update. We, we have to set policy direction that tells us to continue to work with King County Metro, to consider different options to add transit and increase service to the city as we might see increases in density in certain parts of the city. I think those two generally go hand in hand. You have to have the ridership to bring the service, but you have to have the service to bring the ridership. So it's a chicken/egg question. You know, it's kind of a crude statement, but it's, it's reality is which, you know, do you build the density first? Well, what you do is you zone for it. You, you set your future land use designation, you set your policy, you set that all in motion, and you try to obtain grant funding to help get that service and to make improvements to your transportation network. And then you start to see the, the, the development come in once that capacity is, is available. And, and ideally, we're, we're able to mesh up the, the delivery of that, of that capacity with the development coming online.
So in terms of the questions about understanding the checklist, I think I, I do. So it's more about, a little bit about how they get applied. And so there are a couple of buckets that were mentioned, like housing was one and transportation, working regionally. There are a lot of things that weren't mentioned, which is interesting as well. And I'll get to that in a second. But one that was mentioned was about like social justice, racial inclusion, this sort of things. In the conversations that the planning commission had last week, and I listened to some of the council, there was phrases around welcoming and, you know, bringing in the cultures and things like that as part of the vision. Doesn't necessarily say like racial inclusion, quite those words. So I know this is a guess on your part, because, you know, the checklists are still fluid and all that, as we discussed earlier. But do you have a sense of the way we were describing what we'd like to see in the vision for Simamish would be congruent with what's meant in the checklist related to that kind of inclusion, social equity, that sort of thing? And I know it's a guess, but if you could give us a little bit of guidance on that, it would be helpful.
So my sense is, is that's, that's the starting point for that policy development is it comes from the vision. So when, when we think about developing a comprehensive plan, what we're really trying to achieve is we're trying to set the, set the vision by way of resolution, hopefully in March as well, and set the scope. And then we can start to fill in the, the rest of the, I guess, detail around the policy direction. So we, we will have, you know, our, if, you know, if we were sailing somewhere, we would be setting the course, like this, you know, this is where we want to go. This is our objective. And then we would start to figure out what all the stops were along the way to get there. So in, in that sense, I do think that that is in the right direction. It's not going to address it wholly, because you have to actually fill in the policy language.
Right, right. Well, so another way to maybe state that is that what the, those, whether it's the Department of Commerce or Regional Council would be looking at is not just the words in the vision, but what have we built in in terms of the implementation? And think if that's consistent with, what they mean in that checklist.
And, and I think also something that's important is how do we measure it? And how do we know if we're successful? That's another component with this round of comprehensive plans. It's a little bit different than the past.
Yeah. And then I have two other relatively quick ones, so if I could, well, I'm on a roll. So there were things like related to the natural environment that really weren't mentioned in the checklist, very important to us. And we'll still build that into the comprehensive plan. It may not be something that's important from the regional council or Department of Commerce in that, which is of course okay, because like you said, those are just minimum sort of the floor, and we want to maybe do more related to the natural environment. So I think I've interpreted that correctly.
You might not have heard about the natural environment in this presentation or in the summary that was provided as an attachment to the agenda bill, because we largely have policy language that addresses it and meets the requirement. As I said in the beginning, you might, you know, there are some things where we don't have to throw out the whole comprehensive plan, because we have existing policy language that is applicable and meets the, meets the requirement.
Okay.
So in, in many cases, and I think one of the comments we got back from our consultant was, is that we do pretty good in the natural resources realm. We're not perfect. There are things we could improve, especially in implementation. But generally, the policy language is, is, is there and it meets what the, the commerce checklist and PSRC require.
That's actually, so was, the other question I was going to ask was related to that, because I was thinking, I almost wanted to see, I don't know whether it's table or just the listing, but like what we currently have, it's great, no problem. What we have is, yeah, it's close, but there's some work to be done, or you're just missing the boat and you've got a lot of work to do. And it sounds like at least some of that's been done, so we'll, we'll have a chance to see it as we go through the, the process in the next months.
Yeah, so we, you know, we think about it from a, a little bit of a different perspective. We think about it from the perspective of, does this meet the requirement of commerce versus does it meet what, and I think what you're asking, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to, I, I don't want to misstate this, but what you're looking for is, you know, to give us sort of a scorecard on where we stand today with policy language in terms of what the community wants going forward.
Maybe. Actually, it was like just in terms of the work we have to do, there's statements here that are okay, at least in terms of the checklist and the, those who will be judging us. And we could choose to do more there or not. And then there's places where we know we have a lot of work, and that'll give us a sense of the scope that we have to do through the next several months and where we should be kind of putting more of our energy and emphasis, obviously with the guidance of you and the department, so.
So a little later in the process, I think probably beginning next spring, after we have the scope adopted by resolution and the, the vision adopted by resolution, we're going to start digging into each of the elements of the comprehensive plan. The environmental element would be one of those. The land use element, the first one we're going to take on is the land use element, because the land use element informs all of the other elements. It depends on what your, your land use design It depends on what your, your land use design is going forward, or your vision is there, will inform how we address services, how we address environmental protections. I don't really see environmental protections changing too much, because we, whether or not everyone who's listening agrees with this, we do have really great environmental protection policies in our comprehensive plan. I think where we could make some improvement is in that cross connection to our code and to implementation, and how it's actually being implemented through permitting and, and in what is ultimately delivered.
Okay. That is very helpful. Thank you, David. Commissioner Bosworth, did you want to, do you have a couple of questions?
Thank you. I have, I have one question right now. David, have we, is there a working copy of the two checklists filled out?
There are products that the consultant provided back, so that we do have checklists that are filled out, although, as I mentioned previously, it's very, the term I use is esoteric. So, if, if you're looking for a copy of that, we could provide it to you, but it would likely require quite a bit of interpretation, I'm guessing. It's pretty dense, so I think we did link the checklist in the Agenda Bill. We have the completed draft copies back. So, I guess I'm asking, you know, are you looking for a copy of that so you could review it?
Yeah, to, yes, because to, to Mike's point, Commissioner Bresko's point, if there were a lot of yeses, you could just scroll through the pages and understand where we're good on policy, and then focus and know exactly where there is some work that's needed.
So, we tried our best to summarize where work is needed in the attachment to the Agenda Bill. And what that does is it takes those topical areas that were identified where further work is needed and were listed out. If, if you wanted the checklist, I don't, I don't, I mean, it's a, I don't think we have a problem providing it to you. And if you have questions about it, you know, we'd be happy to talk through it. We want to make sure that you all understand what the baseline minimum is, because it's likely that you will hear from someone through this process at some point, and everyone has a different perspective, that something is not required, that we don't have to do something. And what we're trying to do is, is show you our work and show you where the sourcing of these requirements comes from, so that you, as a policy advisory body to the council, understand what is required.
Okay. I, I think it, that's helpful. It's just important to know, to Commissioner Bresko's point, that, that when, when we don't talk about certain things, to know that we're good. So, or, or conversely, to the summary, maybe I missed it, or maybe it was sprinkled in there, you know, here's where we're, we excel at, and don't need to focus much at this time.
And we can, we can bring that back. That's, you know, there are several meetings on the horizon regarding this topic of scoping. So, i- if you think it would be helpful for us to highlight where, where we've, where we have good, sound policy language in the comprehensive plan, and what, what those areas are versus highlighting those areas where we need, we have existing policy language, but we need, we need some work versus those areas that are just completely missing, and we need to do a lot of work. I think that would be helpful for us as well. So, you know, we'll work with the consultant and with the staff team, we can bring that back.
Yeah, yeah, or, yeah, maybe even instead of a, a word summary, like a chart, a, a chart where we're, you know, to, so we could just see where we're doing well, and, and what areas we need, and then, you know, space for additional information as to why.
That's a great, great idea. I think it would be helpful for us to understand the scoping, and providing a graphic and a visual, visualization will help us understand scoping better, and we might even want to attach it to the scope.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that suggestion and the questions.
Commissioner Norman?
Thank you. I wanted to ask you a question for your thoughts on, I, I don't understand why we're so environmentally sensitive and concerned citizens, and as you just stated, we've got great environmental rules right now and seem to be okay with it. I don't understand why Senate Bill 5818, the provisions in there requires to waive the right to appeal development under the Environmental Policy Act. What, what would be their purpose of putting that kind of restriction in?
So, what they're trying to do is to pave the way for implementation. They, they're, my understanding is that there are, well, there's certain criteria for when that applies and when it doesn't, written into that. But my, but SEPA typically, if, if you have a comprehensive plan that was adopted through a well-run public process, and you had a lot of community engagement, and in that comprehensive plan, some of the policy language directs that certain types of housing should be built in certain areas in the city, and then you go through the zoning process to establish that zoning, and you, you design your development regulations and your zoning code and go through a public process to do that. And you then are seeing a project finally, after all that work is done, come, come in and be built on the ground, that should, should there be another bite at the apple when, when that project is finally being built and implemented?
It just seems strange to ask cities or require that they waive their, their rights to protect the environment when, when it's all about protecting the environment. I mean, just as a sidebar, I just read yesterday that, you know, the, the states come out with a, a warning about eating fish out of Lake Sammamish. You know, there's like five different species of fish they don't want you to try and eat because of the toxins that are in the lake right now. And so, it just seemed funny to me, they would ask cities to waive their rights to appeal development.
I think it also comes from the direction that the state is seeing a housing emergency, and that they're wanting to eliminate any roadblocks to seeing housing built. And they're wanting cities to take comprehensive planning seriously and code development seriously, and that, that is where the effort should be put in, in community discussion, not at the very end, after all those things have happened, and someone's finally trying to build the project, and, and then it, it's appealed and taken to court and delayed for years. That, I think, is really the angle that they're looking at. Note, though, that there are, in that bill, if you look it up, if you have a chance, there, there are some limitations on when it applies. I think adequacy of infrastructure is, is a big one. So, there are, are limitations on when that exemption applies. And, you know, that would fit in the category of stormwater. I also think there's some environmental constraint. I have to go back and look, it's been a while since I've looked at it, but it's, it's a good question. But generally, there's also another change to state law that was made a few years ago, where if the city does an environmental impact statement as part of its comprehensive plan adoption process, then when development is actually being implemented, that there is, SEPA is waived, you don't have to, it's exempt from SEPA. So, some cities are doing that. I know Renton, or excuse me, Redmond, for example, is doing an EIS with their comprehensive plan. My understanding is that what that would do is enable them to be more nimble with permitting so that they wouldn't have to go through the SEPA process later when projects are implemented. We're not proposing that, we don't have an EIS proposed.
Thank you.
Chair Baughman, did you have any questions?
I did. I have one comment and two questions. My comment is about the, first, I would say that I can recognize that, to some extent, this is sort of secondhand, so it's been interpreted, and, and without knowing or reading the source content, there's some level of interpretation going on. But I think that, and I want to make sure that, encourage that we keep our eyes on, some of the stuff that are in these checklist requirements or comments are very specific things, like maps for land use. And then there's other things where there's just high-level words that are used, and there were some comments about this earlier this evening, but I think that what concerns me a little bit is the specificity, and I hope we keep our eyes on that, because if we're both required and intend to have a more detailed plan than maybe what our previous version was, then we should be somewhat consistent between the different parts of that plan in how specific it is in terms of implementation, actions, measurements, and that sort of thing. And, and two reasons for that, one is it'll lead to a more successful plan, but also, I think that if we don't challenge ourselves, and as well as the people that have made this checklist and are reviewing our plans, to, you know, monitor how we're doing, then what we put in there just becomes throwaway words that are not very useful. So, that's my comment. My two questions are, are probably simpler than this. I'm curious if you could comment on how much of these, I would call this a deficiencies list, and, and maybe it's our opinion of deficiencies list. How much of it is kind of everybody seeing because of those changes in, in state statutes and requirements? And how much of it is stuff that really is just us having our first comp plan, you know, needing to, needing to be more thoroughly developed? And so, maybe other cities aren't seeing that, but they are seeing some of the things that are in here. I mean, honestly, I'm surprised the list isn't a bit longer, but I can't tell whether that's the right evaluation or not.
So, the big one, the housing one, is a mix of our comp plan really needing to be modernized, to be, I, I think, consistent with regionally, some of the regional efforts that are going on. The, the housing one also comes from a whole new requirement that all the cities are having to face regarding housing affordability and, and diversity in housing type. That's, aside from the, the transportation and mobility components, I think that's the biggest one. The other one regarding the multimodal transportation, I think it, it's, it's also mixed again. You know, that's a good question, and I'll ask the, the consultant, who has worked on several other comprehensive plans and might have a better awareness than I do, because I'm more focused on ours, to, to help us understand that. So, that's a, a good one to take away, is, is understanding where the results of the checklist are from big changes that all the other cities are having to face too, versus where the results in the checklist are from just general adequacy of our comprehensive plan as it, as it stood previously, without those new changes, those new House bills or Senate bills to consider. Is that, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, it is. And I guess I would just say that, you know, to me, I'd like to, in my mind at least, think that when I look at this, there's a tendency to make it appear that there's a lot of critique, you know, oh, we need to fix all these things in our comp plan, and the old comp plan, you know, was so weak, and, you know, we don't say that, but it kind of, there's a little bit of a suggestion of that. But in reality, this list to me feels like it's mostly a reflection of a good comp plan that we had previously. And now, over time, over whatever it's been, seven years, eight years, since some of that stuff was written and developed, things have changed. And so, we shouldn't necessarily have that sort of negative view of it. We just need to address these things, just like everybody else does. My other question is, one of the things that jumped out at me in the language here, amongst many, but this one I wanted to ask about, regional responsibility. How do we define what regional responsibility is, or what we think it is? Or is that something that the, that the Puget Sound Regional Council says, this is what regional responsibility is? It's one of those terms that, the more I think about it, the less I think I know what it, you know, what we will commonly agree it means. Is there any, is there any guidance on that? Is there any definition? Is there any, when we talk about it, what should we be talking about?
Well, I think that goes back to the framework around the geography groups and the attributes of the geography groups, and how you fit into the bigger picture in the Puget Sound region. Looking at the roles that are defined in PSRC's Vision 2050 for all the different categories, and the cities and towns for Sammamish, and how we fit in and what our role is. I, I have long been an advocate for the regional geography groups and the definitions and the, and the, the attributes of each of the, the groups. And I feel that sometimes in regional conversations, that that is lost. And I've raised it, and I, and I feel that some of my counterparts have as well, and there's been some resetting on some things, like application through King County Countywide Planning Policy of HB 1220, and the assignment of affordable housing growth targets. And thinking about, you know, the, the different options that the county's considered over time, and the way that's been broken up and disaggregated from the statewide need, it, it's, it's important to remember that. So, I would say, different people have different perspectives on what regional responsibility is. It really depends on, I think, you all and your perspective of what you think your regional responsibility is. We, we can provide feedback and point you to documents and point you to conversations that are happening. For example, at the, the Growth Management Planning Council, if you read through the commentary and adoption of the June of 2021 King County Countywide Planning Policies, you could see some of the commentary that's made about what people, what different members of GNPC think regional responsibility is. I think that's a real eye-opener. And the term fair share is used regularly in some of the, the notes in that meeting. So, you know, if you think about what fair share means, well, does that mean that, that we are all taking on our fair share of housing in the region? Versus, if you think about fair share, is it divided by, what attribute are you dividing it by? Some people think it should be divided by population, some people think it should be divided by square miles, some people think it should be divided by proximity to publicly-funded infrastructure. Some people think it should be divided by the attributes of the geography category that you fit in. So, these are all things to consider. They're all different points of reference and different perspectives. But I, I would like, you know, my, my focus, if I had it my way, and you, you know, you all are policy advisors, you all are the ones that are setting the direction and can tell me otherwise, but if I had it my way, I would continuously reference it back to PSRC's Vision 2050 and the attributes associated with the cities and towns category, and the growth target that that resulted in for the city. The one challenge that we have is understanding, and this one is going to be pervasive, and we're going to have to talk about this some more, is what the relationship is between the city's growth target and the soon-to-be-received, sometime in the summer of '23, affordable housing targets. Because the affordable housing targets are equal to the total number of units in our, in our growth target, and if we're supposed to build all of our growth target in the zero to 30, 30 to 50, and 50 to 80 percent range, how does that work? Does that mean that we are supposed to discourage market rate units from being built in the future for the next 20 years? What does that mean? We're working on that with the county, but that's a big one that we'll be coming back to you with, with more information. So, in terms of, do, you know, regional responsibility, that's, that's how I would like to go, is to, to pin it back to the definitions or the attributes included in the cities, the Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050 Cities and Towns Geography category.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, as I listen to you to, to describe that, I think it's probably important for all of us to recognize that we should, just like we're doing with some of this checklist, define the floor of that. So, whatever we think regional responsibility is, maybe the most important thing to start out with is, what does DOC and PSRC think the regional responsibility is? Because they're the ones that have to approve the plan. So, as long as we're aiming at least at that, and then if we decide collectively we want to do more than that, just like everything else, that's our choice. But understanding what the basics are of that, is it just housing? Does it go beyond that? What does it mean? Because it would be easy to get off on a tangent with those two words. Okay, that's all I had.
Great, great comment, and that's one we'll, we'll definitely add to the, the long, the growing list of things to keep track of, but that's a good one to continue to revisit.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I've got a, I've got a couple, and then I think we have some more up here as well.
I have a question on Commerce's requirement to. On how to implement the policy, the requirement they have that we, you know, define, am I understanding that right, that we have some ideas of how we're going to actually execute against? Some policy proposal we have, do they have a a minimum threshold? What does that to define what that looks like?
So with regard to, so I I think with each different category, it's a little bit different. I think what they're looking for is is that enabling a language that tells us sort of how it's going to be done to to have a, to have a policy direction on something, but to not have any. Relevance to time, budget, capacity. How to measure it. I think that's what they're getting at is if you're going to write policy language that directs you to take something on. But you just do it. Sort of in a vacuum without reference to anything else, they really want to see. Uh, that additional language that will enable. Us to measure how we're doing against implementation.
So if we get, you know, a hundred ideas and we have fifty of them that are that we have some direction of how we're going to implement them, but we would like to see in. Some future Sammamish that these other fifty are implemented, is there a portion on the comp plan where we can like? Parking lot it like, oh, we really wish we could do this, maybe in five years. We'll have some and then we can amend it, or is there a way to like make sure that what we? We don't lose them or so that the comp plan is very clean on. Implementable policy goals.
I definitely, I I think that, you know, you you could also include. Language so so that you have actionable policies that are actually reasonable reasonably achieved in the planning horizon. But that you have other community goals or other things that are aspirational for the city. That may not be attainable in the planning horizon, but that we don't want to lose track of. And that if we do a really great job implementing and say there's some big windfall and we have lots of money to spend and we do lots of things that we can. Pull those out of the pool and work on those also, you know, that they're that they're. Priorities for the community, however, they're not priorities that we see as. Attainable within the planning horizon based on the resources that we know that we have or expect to have and within that timeframe.
Okay. Um, okay, going back to the map again, that's a fun one. Um, thinking back to how long the San Tony property took, I'm curious, um. My concern would be like we put a map in the comp plan and there's a parcel that's in the wrong section because we had to do it quickly. Like what, how controlling is this map down to that minute level versus? Like, how, how should I think about that map as far as like? That it, am I, I'm probably not making much sense, but.
You, no, no, you do, you know, I was thinking about different examples, so some cities actually have legal descriptions around those polygons that are in there. So, you know, it's it's really detailed. Um, other cities just just use it sort of graphically that, you know, these landmarks, these this street, this, you know. Boundary roughly is where the edge of that land use designation is and the the corresponding zoning. Um, it run, that creates problems when you have split zones or split designations. Those are, we have some language in our code how to handle that, but those are fun to deal with, um. The, uh, the, but what would happen then is you could, you know, we have the ability every year to dock it. Changes to the map or the text of the comp plan and that if the council discovered or the commission discovered. You know, it'd be run through the commission, then the council, but if you had somebody in the community who said, hey. This doesn't make sense, why is this designation split on my property or? And why does it end here when it really should, it should have gone fifty feet or a hundred feet or a thousand feet further this way? They can file a docket request. And we can take that up, um. Can't remember with fees where we landed with dockets, but. Individual map changes, there's a bit of a higher cost associated with those, um. The most recent fee update we did, we looked at. Historically, the cost burden has been on the city, it's been a subsidized process. But in looking at the the way in which we do cost recovery, we've shifted that off for for. For map amendments to the property owner who would benefit from it. Um, if it's a amendment that's proposed for other reasons, then then you can waive it, there's all sorts of things associated with the cost of that. What I'm getting at is that it it may not be the cheapest process to go through, um, so I just want you to be aware of that.
Okay, so diving a little deeper on that. Maybe is that. It's a long process to draw these maps and we're talking about potentially changing a lot, and while the comp plan process is quite long. That project in and of itself is a long and arduous one with. A lot of opinions, so how do we do this accurately in such a short period of time?
So what we'll probably do is is just look at the the general designate, the zoning and we'll we'll reverse engineer the land use map. Into a a map that's based on the existing zoning. Then from there, we'll look at where where you all as a matter of of a land use design for the city going forward. Think there's opportunity to add density, to incentivize things, uh, you know, in a. We're we're not in this to try and reshape the city, that's not what we're trying to do, what we're looking for is. Areas of opportunity to add some additional density and potentially create some. Incentivized zoning where you could get some affordability. And we can show that we are planning for and accommodating different ranges of income groups. Um, you know, there's, there's a couple of ways to look at it, I was talking to Jeff Arango, our consultant the other night at the city before the city council meeting and. You know, one thing we're looking at is the, um, the state has taken up. A few times now, attempts to require homogenized. Uh, zoning in cities where you would be required to allow infill on any parcel in the city, duplex, triplex, fourplex. Based on some criteria, you know, you have to have certain amenities, et cetera, distance from things. And those those bills haven't advanced, there is a likelihood that those will come to life again. And we will have to do this anyway. I, the Sound Cities Association, the Public Interest Committee is looking at, um. Uh, they're working with cities with mayors and with staff and they're looking at a way to design. Um, an alternative that's more feasible, as we think more feasible, um, and less impactful. And it's looking at allowing, um, three dwelling units on any parcel in the city within a quarter mile of an arterial or a school or a park. And that's the one that the the Sound Cities Association is currently looking at as an alternative. Under the assumption that if we don't do something, then the state is going to come in and. Mandate something, um, and it may not be to to our liking. So trying to find where they're going to land on that and what alternative they might land on, so. Getting back to the land use map, th- there is the potential that we will see some sort of mandate in the future. To allow to allow multiple units on one parcel in the city. Well, if we have twenty-two thousand units in the city and. You, you know, even if you had. Over twenty years, one tenth of those properties added a unit to their parcels, you could see how quickly that could fill in. Um, I don't think that would happen that quickly, that's just an example. Um, and then that allows us also to focus on, um, infill and redevelopment of existing commercial centers that are outside of the town center. Where you could add incentives and look at at. Zoning controls and how to turn the dials and move the levers. To try to promote that redevelopment, if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, but we have to show that we're planning for and accommodating it with reasonable code provisions. Um, so what what we're talking about is taking the existing layout of the city. And looking for areas of opportunity for some additional infill, not redesigning the city altogether, so. We would look at the the the, um, Inglewood, the Pine Lake, the Kohani. The Parkway has one commercial area, um, I think it's currently vacant, I think the gas station closed or something, so. There are, there, these are areas already adjacent to arterials. These are areas with already a high amount of impervious. These are areas already with a traffic pattern that's established to some degree. Um, that we could look at. How do we fine tune that, how do we, how do we allow for density to be added when there are appropriate? Partner services like transit, if we were to get transit online. Um, s- you know, it it, the idea is we don't want to add stormwater, we don't want to, we don't want more impervious, so we want to be careful with that. We want walkability, so, you know, are there services nearby that people could walk to? But we also are conscious of the fact that two twenty-eighth. Is is largely overburdened, I'm I'm saying that from the planner, I'm not a transportation person. I'm just, it's a, it's a, it's more of an anecdotal observation that there are times. When it backs up, when school gets out, when school starts. There's, there's some cars on the road. Um, I don't want people to think that I'm saying there's a traffic problem, I don't want people to think I'm saying there isn't a traffic problem, I'm not judging that either way. It's an observation that we want to make sure that if we added density along two twenty-eighth. That we were conscious about how that would impact our existing transportation systems and their capacities. So that, then there's the town center. And what could happen in the town center, well, there is opportunity in the town center to turn the dials and move the levers, you could. You could, you know, there are people who advocate out in the community, I've heard it before, to raise the the building heights in the town center. The challenge with raising building heights and affordability is that you're looking at the the traditional model of a five over one. Or a six over two. And those are construction types that are efficient, cost effective construction types. And you can't really raise the building heights much higher than a six over two. Because the the cost benefit of that does not lend to affordability, now you're moving into a different type of construction that is highly. It's expensive and you can't build affordable units with expensive construction. So there's something that's being considered right now that's, um, and I may be going into too much detail on this and you can shut me down whenever you want, I could talk about this all day, the. There's something being considered by by. The Washington, um, State Code Building Code Council. And some some groups of building officials for its mass timber framing. And it's a more cost effective way to go a little bit higher, uh, and it and it would allow for affordability in construction, so looking at that, that's one. The other is, I think there's a finding, I think I heard from the city of Redmond that their study was. That in order for you to lend to affordability, you have to go over twelve stories. That that really is where the sweet spot is, where you pick up affordability and can actually see affordable units being constructed. At the the right cost for them to meet that that market price that they're trying to hit. So these are all things to consider and we would want to bring in a, you know, a qualified professional, not myself, to talk about those, I'm not a building professional by any means. Um, about that, if you ever wanted to, if you wanted to consider raising building heights as one method of incentivizing affordability. The option is there, it it has proven to work in some areas.
Commissioner Beckman.
So comment. For those of you that don't get the newspaper anymore, you might have missed this. Yesterday's headline is Governor Inslee's proposed budget would add four billion dollars in bonds. For affordable housing. So hopefully we can tap some of that.
It's a, it's, that, that's part of it, I think it's part of the conversation is. Once you set the land use pattern, then you start to look at what other programs we have policy language around such as. Um, funding, financing, bonds, that kind of thing.
Mister Chair, I think we're set.
Great. Um, Carrie, I just want to check since you're on the screen here, did you have any other comments or questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Thanks, I think that's it. For this topic for now, although I'm sure we're going to come back to it quite a few times.
With the hope that we'll get to a scope and a and a vision statement on sometime in the end of March adopted by resolution, that's the goal, I want to, I want to hit that again, because we're trying to. Stay on schedule and that's, that's one of the major benchmarks.
Yeah, I think that we will support you completely in that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's, uh, move on to agenda related public comment. So you're giving a pause for a second here to get that lined up, Julian, do we have? Agenda related public comment, anybody in the room or on the phone?
Yes, we have one individual in the room, Ms. Victor is about to speak.
Um, hello, this is Mary Victor, uh, Sammamish, Washington. Really good meeting, excellent questions from all of you and good examples. Um, I think Josh's line of thinking was very good and, um, what Councilmember or Commissioner Bosworth had talked about was really important and just the good questions that have happened. Um, just from listening to things, I'm just going to comment since I've attended meetings for about seven years now. Um, what Director Pyle had talked about before, uh, I go to a lot of meetings virtually in Bozeman, Montana where I grew up. And there's an Economic Development Committee and an Economic Vitality Board there. And they did a bunch of performers and studies that showed, um, when you're constructing. Buildings that are multi-story, as soon as you get four stories, you can build wood, but then above that you end up doing. Metal and I I beam construction and just the cost and the type of development is entirely different. So that really dovetails with what Director Pyle had said about there's certain levels of building where it makes more sense, so sometimes you say add more density or add another height, but. You just, it costs more to do it, so you do have to look at that, um, but that is one option. Um, I like the comment on stormwater that we don't want to add impervious surfaces anywhere. Um, there were, uh, so the stormwater code was really old, nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand nine and. First day of two thousand seventeen, we had to update it, and then I think we've had two or maybe three revisions on stormwater code changes. Um, which I speak to a lot. Um, in the King County manuals, there's something called, um, existing impervious surface. And it's significantly developed when you use thirty-five percent of your area, so if your lot's like. Ten thousand square feet, if you've done thirty-five hundred square feet, it's really significantly developed. And I did get that put as a limit in Tamarack, but I'd really hope that it would be twenty-five hundred square feet, so I think we need to look at. Um, there's a comment in the packet that says, do we look at like the stormwater comp plan, do we look at other things like maybe the public work standards? Because I know there's been a couple of issues that I know former council members have raised. That, um, I think those things, I don't think the whole document needs to be looked at, but I think there are key points. Where those topics about how street standards are, how the stormwater standards are, how limits. Um, are are important, for example, if you're built in a subdivision and there's a stormwater pond that's built for you. There's a code and covenants in your subdivision thing that says you can't go over this size, because if everybody went over it, the stormwater pond wouldn't work anymore. But we have lots of older plats, we have a lot of unplatted where there're just lots that existed and there isn't any restriction for them, so I think you need to look for that because we just don't want to go in and. Build really wildly and build high there and have it down by the lake or someplace where there's not stormwater control or water, um, quality. Um, so I think those are the, some of the things to look at. Um, I know the older, I'm not going to call them the older, the council, the former former councils, um, had said, we really like narrower streets, we don't want the sea of pavement. We like taller, skinnier houses, um, and then you do need to have more variety, so those were some things that were brought up. Um, I don't really have much more to say, it was, I was reading, there was a lot of stuff in the checklist. Um, I guess what I could say is the first, so the City Incorporated, uh, August thirty-first of nineteen ninety-nine and it'd come from King County. The first comprehensive plan was done in two thousand three, and I don't know at all the background for that, it's just an ordinance that's online. Um, and it's read, and then the second time they did the comp plan was more than ten years later, because they started in two thousand twelve, but it didn't get done till two thousand fifteen. And I had understood and I never got it actually confirmed, but they kind of threw out the first comp plan and just started the second one. Also, like a lot of the steep slopes and landslides and things that I talk about were missing, so I'm glad to hear that we're not just going to throw out the current comp plan and go, because. The current comp plan, when I've read it, um, through and in parts, I think is quite good in a lot of areas. But there are missing things and older things and things that need to get modified, so, um, Jeff Arango, who's from Framer, who's one of the consultants. I think at one of the meetings in the last three months, he'd said, well, what you do is you start with the goals and the policies. And the comp plan, and then you kind of morph those, and if you read them for like, if you're thinking about septics, like we have. Over three thousand septics in the city, we're at seventeen percent and they need to put the sewer in, but you've got to have sewer in areas that don't have it, so how do you do that? So there's a wastewater comprehensive plan that Sammamish Plateau Water has worked on and, um, I believe the city just gave inputs to it. Um, and that's going, but how do you get these septic areas to convert, so if you look for the goals and policies. You'll find only a few things about that, so that's somewhere where it could be more robust or added in, because, um. Having sewers and having water, there's three wet utilities, water, which we mostly have throughout the city, some people are in wells. Sewer, which if you don't have it, and there are lots of areas, they're orange on the Sammamish Plateau maps that they've done recently. And then, um, stormwater, and there are areas that don't have stormwater because they were old stormwater, so I think you have to look at. So I think you have to look at those things. And I do hope that there are maps in the comp plan. I know in the past, sometimes there either weren't maps when you wanted one, or there was a map and it didn't have a legend, or the map is, oh, it's old and we don't want to use that. So I think we need to have really good maps that where the data comes from, when it was produced, who it was by, what it covers, so that they're very valid. Because maps, maps, there's always a problem, you know, like when you drive somewhere, your GPS tries to tell you where to go and there's a new road. So you can never keep the maps up to date, but they can be good general guidelines. And then just the biggest thing is, is when David Goodman worked here, he left the city. But I remember him doing a thing on the future land use map versus the zoning map. And ours are exactly the same. So we have two maps that say the same thing, which just doesn't make any sense. I think he'd used as part of some of the city meetings, the Redmond, I think, has a future land use map. And it kind of says, this area is for mixed use and this area is for residential and this area is for whatever. And then the actual zoning map goes with it. And for all the meetings that I do in Bozeman, Montana, they have a 2020 community plan and they have, they call it the FLUM, the future land use map. And it says, this is community, community, community commercial. This is, can be really tall buildings up to 70 feet plus stuff that sticks up above it. This is a regional area where you could put a hospital. This is different urban residences like R1, R2, R3, R4. And it works really well and those type of zonings go through, they call it the city commission there instead of council. But those go through the city council commission all the time. You just see them go through, they roll through, they change them. And whenever you zone in annex, you have to say what all the potential uses are, like can there be a car wash there? Can there be a, you know, whatever? And so it's kind of complicated to read through and they're kind of restructuring their code using code studio in Montana. But there are a lot of things that David talked about that dovetail. So hopefully as we go through and I read things, I'll be able to give examples or show things. And if anybody would like to see those future land use maps, I can send them from Montana and email them out. That might be useful. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Victor. And we have one hand raised. Mr. Stickney, I'm going to promote you to panelist.
Hello, planning contributors. Very good meeting. I echo what, uh, Mary said, a lot of well thought out, important questions and topics you guys talked about. I want to start with six words or two words times three. Local, 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 quantify, quantify, quantify. I'm going to build on some of those during my comment. A couple of points first. Commissioner Bresko talked about early on environmental standards and then, uh, David Byall mentioned, and I echo, I think that our environmental standards on average and holistically are far superior protection than most peer cities. Another issue is I had heard about those mass timber construction and I read something about it just a couple of days ago. I went online and found it. The Washington State Building Code has just approved mass timber construction up to 18 stories tall. And that mirrors what California has done. So that's an interesting piece. In the, in the Department of Commerce checklist, they do make sure that all goals and policies are consistent and that is important. A couple of other things from the Department of Commerce checklist is a comment that we need to plan for our, our, our future land use, or excuse me, our building intensities based on future land use and, um, and housing needs. Sorry about that. We do need to look at from again, Department of Commerce, housing needs over the planning period by income band, consistent with the jurisdictions, housing needs. Then jumping into PSRC a little bit, I think it's a good reminder, and they have a good statement at the start of their regional growth strategy, that Division 2050 supports rural and resource lands as vital parts of, of the region. I think a lot of people forget the three types of land use that are basically in our four county area. Resource lands have virtually no housing. They make up about 61% of our four counties. The next land use is rural. That makes up roughly 23%. And on average, those are five acre parcels. There are exceptions, larger and smaller. And 16% of the land area is urban. And this is important because it's part of the whole. So we need to understand and keep those things in mind. PSRC talks about achieving housing targets and affordability goals. It talks about having housing supply to meet the regionals' current and projected needs at all income levels. It talks about meeting needs for all income levels and, and all the, you know, demographic groups and to promote flexible standards and innovative approaches to encourage housing production that keeps pace with growth and need. This is important and this is what I'm circling about. Regional growth is one thing. Local current and projected needs is quite another. We need to plan for both, but our community has never quantified what our local, local, local internal needs and wants are in specific numbers. What are all economic gaps now and projected for all income levels in Sammamish? And what are all, you know, demographic gaps in Sammamish? And why should we do that? Well, it's because our community is large enough to do that. It's because of the wealth and relative incomes that we make in our community on average. And it's because our housing supplies are more im, you know, balanced, I'll spit out the B, than any other city. That's why as one of our optional things, the region stops studying economic growths at either 100 to 120%. That's a mistake for our community. We need to know the housing supplies that are needed, not the ability to pay, but the housing supplies that are needed for all of our residents over time. I was doing some homework on the Department of Commerce site as well as some CHAZ data. And I can put together housing supply versus households for the first five categories up to 100%. Can't do it over 100% because they don't have that information quantified. Well, it, it was very interesting for the three categories, and this is recent information, a 2020 housing supplies and 2019 household incomes. For the three categories at 80% and under, zero to 30, 30 to 50 and 50 to 80, our internal community locally here has a shortage of 1,700 housing units. But that's not what surprised me. What surprised me was between 80 to 100%, our community has a surplus of 859. And what I ask are what are the shortages and surpluses for all income levels? And as I always say, we don't have to meet all those, but we do need to know what they are. Six sevenths of our residents make over 100% AMI. Life happens, planned and unplanned changes. We need to, you know, look into that and get that data. So I'll close with local, 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 quantify, quantify, quantify. Appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney. And we have no correction. We have one more hand. Mr. Eastman, if you're attempting to speak, your mic is still muted.
Sorry. James Eastman, Sammamish, Washington. Been listening to all the mass timber talk and it's hard not to get excited about, about all the cost savings and how wonderful it is and how high you can go, but it's not there quite yet. I know from firsthand experiences, I bought into all those same reasons a couple of years ago, went and worked for a startup that was overtaking the world called Katera, the lead builder of mass timber. I was lead project controls, lead on Life Bridge, which is right across from Kirkland City Hall, has some CLT in it. Building we built, uh, across from the Safeway Shoreline, five over two, uh, CLT mass timber building. And then one down in Hillsboro, Oregon, Amber Glen, all wonderful projects. But the cost savings that you guys speak of, um, we bid them thinking that would be the case as a company and they definitely didn't materialize. And I don't know what's happened since, but I'm not sure that there is any argument that says mass timber is much cheaper than conventional construction. And it's something that anybody can go Google, just Google the term Katera or the company. And, uh, but it is wonderful for carbon capture. That was one of the wonderful selling points. So I thought I'd just throw that in there and I don't mean to spoil all the wonderful talk about it, but it's not everything that it's promised to be right now. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Eastman, and we have no more hands raised.
All right. Thanks, Julian. If, I can't see if Evan is there. Evan, anything from staff further for this evening?
Uh, nothing from us.
I do want to just mention the calendar that's published. We have a pretty heavy load of things to do for 2023. And so our, our next meeting starts right off the bat on January 5th. So make sure you take note of the calendar. I don't think we have anything else. Could someone move to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moving in second and we adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those know. Everyone have a very warm, wonderful holiday season and I will look forward to seeing you on a healthier state on January 5th. Thanks, everyone. Good evening.
Thanks.